It was impressive. Oh, yeah. How cool.
Good evening. Welcome to our 7:00 PM session of the March 20th, 2018 Public Safety Study Session. I'd like to ask the clerk at this time to please call roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember it's Crone.
President.
Matthews.
Here.
Chase.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Norroyan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Watkins.
Here.
And Mayor Terasas.
Here. Tonight, we only have one item on our agenda, which will be the Public Safety Study Session. And this was one, the last time we had a comprehensive study session was about, I'd say it's been about four years ago. And so I'm really thankful for all those of you that are present. We'll have a staff presentation, followed by questions from the council, and we'll have then the opportunity for public comment and deliberation. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Police Chief Andy Mills to kick off the meeting.
Well, good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for taking the time to go through these 250 slides with me. Actually, it's only forty-some, so.
Wait, I'm like, what?
We want to make you feel better about how long this is going to last. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to be able to show you and discuss with you what direction we're headed, what challenges we see, and how do we get to the end game. And so we'll go through these slides with you. I would like to acknowledge that several of my senior staff members are here and acknowledge them for their hard work. So we have Deputy Chief Martinez and Deputy Chief Filippo with us. Just can't say enough good things about the quality of work that they've been doing and helping with this whole process. And we also have three of our four lieutenants. One lieutenant is currently at a meeting down in Los Angeles. But we have Lieutenant Jose Garcia, might help if I move my glasses, Lieutenant Warren Berry, and then Lieutenant Christian LaMoss, and as well several other staff members who have come to take part in this. So as you're aware, as you're aware, staff.
You got one more there.
Arnold.
Arnold.
Well, that's what teach him to sit down. And then Lieutenant Arnold Vasquez, our newest lieutenant, and just doing a marvelous job also. So as you're aware, in 2016, there was discussion amongst city council about a staffing study and what that might be able to do for the city in terms of understanding the problems and the difficulties with crime and disorder in our city. And prior to my arrival, a contract was agreed to with CPSM to conduct this analysis, and they did so, and that was completed in November of 2017. Just so you understand who they are, it's an experienced group and team of former command staff members, one former city manager and one former city chief of police, as well as technical advisors to come in and really scour a police department from top to bottom, and really take a good look at who we are, what we're doing. Literally, they left no stone unturned. So the Center for Public Safety Management came in and under the auspices, the umbrella of the International City and County Management Association, and took a look at us and interviewed most of our staff, and did a good thorough job. And as a result, they were, gave us some feedback that I'll go over in a few minutes. Just the background of the staffing study, if I might. So it was an analysis of the operational efficiencies of our department and the configurations that might improve officer availability and productivity. And I think that's the key element that we're trying to drive at is our effectiveness. And there were three phases of the study. The data collection occurred first, and they did a great job poring over that data. And then they did a site visit and then construction of the recommendations, which you see in front of you. There's 103 recommendations to both the SCPD and Parks and Rec. Of those, there are 13 categories for police and seven different categories for rangers. And we'll again get into all of this. And the full report is posted online for anybody from the community to see as well. The executive summary states that, and congratulations to SCPD, overall, they've provided very high quality of law enforcement service to the city of Santa Cruz. And I think that's something to take a look at and appreciate and understand how hard the men and women of this department work on a daily basis, as well as the Parks and Rec staff. The staff is professional and dedicated. They're also well-educated. The analysis was conducted to understand our strengths, but also the opportunities that we have to make it better. And so we wanted to take a good, hard look at that. And then one thing that jumped out at me immediately was that many of the recommendations can be accomplished by realigning our workload. And when you take a look at that, I think that one phrase sums up much of this investment that we did. And then also, and I'm quoting here, recognize that this process takes time, not just weeks or months, but perhaps years. And I think that that's an important caution. So the police department had 80 recommendations. I'm happy to report that we've jumped on it with both of you, and 37 are done. And then there's another 20 that are currently underway, and then 23 that we are going to have to take a little bit longer look at, study, and figure out whether or not we can do those in terms of cost and effort and time. But many of these, again, will take time, a long period of time to implement. Parks and Recs had 23 recommendations. Most of those centered around or were solved by movement to SCPD. And again, we'll get into that. So of the recommendations by assignment, 13 primary categories comprising the 80 recommendations, administrative recommendations for the chief's office, two are done, one is underway. And you can go into the front part of the report and see what each of these individual recommendations are. Patrol, there are three done, one underway, and we're going to have to study one. And then downtown unit, one is done. And that team, two are done. Now, having said that, the downtown unit and the net team no longer exist. That's why they're done. They're now been merged into the neighborhood policing teams. And that's a significant movement for us. I can go through all these individually and report out, you know, two done, one done, but I think that you can read these for yourself. The point is that we've really taken this seriously. We've worked very hard to implement some of these recommendations and took great care to study them. And again, you can see that there's some for the facilities, some for transportation and booking. There's a variety of things and recommendations they made. Some, to be frank, won't just work here. But we're going to look at them anyway and make sure that we study them to understand whether or not these would work and what reasons they may not work. Time line for implementation. We're committed to implementing these as fast as possible, as long as they're operationally and fiscally reasonable. A five-year timeframe is what they suggested is to have most of these done, which fits nicely with our leadership plan that we've already completed. And so we were happy about that. 16 of the recommendations are directly related to the records management system that is critical. And I'm happy to report that I met on that today with Netcom. And the sheriff's office is strongly considering also jumping into this RFP with us. So that would put almost every major police agency in the county on the same system. That would be huge in terms of the ability to collect information, share it with one another, take a look at crime stats. I mean, we take a hard look at jurisdictions and location. Crooks don't. They don't care about crossing over into Live Oak or past Seventh Street, which the sheriff's area. So this will be good information. It'll be a great way to do this. They'll also shoulder some of the cost and the burden of that system, so that will be important as well. Some of these do include capital improvement project money, which we will, again, merge in to see what the city's priorities are and figure those out as we go. Develop a mission statement. Well, we were already underway, and so we've got that completed, and this is the mission statement. And just to remind council, the mission statement came from meeting with the communities, meeting individually with community members, taking all of that data, and then giving it to our sergeants to turn into a mission statement, which went to patrol, who highlighted the words that they felt were really important to them. And then that went to the command staff, which penciled this out and made sure that it was something that everybody could understand and agree to, and it was very well received. I was very impressed by the amount of attention and detail and care that each of our employees took. I would figure, I figured that, you know, 50% of our employees would stand back with their arms crossed, saying, why do I have to do this? I'd rather be out working. But what I found was exactly the opposite. They were thirsty for it. They were hungry for it, and they all pitched in. And I think the result is we have a great product. Secession planning was very important in the study, as well as to the department. That was identified ahead of time by many of our employees. And so, and we need to ensure that employees are trained and mentored to serve as future leaders. That was recommendation number two. Well, took that seriously. We already have a spot secured for the FBI National Academy in 2019, 2019 is as quick as we could get it. And one of the purposes of us redistricting and doing this neighborhood policing is so that these lieutenants, who are fairly young and will probably outlast many of us in the department, will be the future leaders. And so they are acting as the chief of police for a section of the city, and allowing them to handle the crime control, handle the personnel, handle the complaints from community members, and balance all of those things. And so I think that all of them are rising to that level and are just doing a fantastic job. And then we're also offered other schools for the mid-management and the senior management of our department to make sure that they can go and receive some of the best training in the country. And that's one of the reasons Bernie is down in Los Angeles right now. Develop a strategic plan. Part of the strategic plan that was developed, and there's a copy of the front page for you. This was underway, but we agreed with everything they said about that. And so we called a leadership plan instead of a strategic plan. It's just a semantical thing. But for us, it's more of a direction of where are we going and how are we getting there, and what are the milestones we want to accomplish. And certainly, anybody can avail themselves of that copy, which is also on the web. So, but what's the priority of policing? The priority of policing is to prevent and control crime. Pure and simple. Unfortunately, you can look at these crime rates and see that it's an area that we need to do a lot better in. Even if you adjust our crime rates to include the university, us as a county seat, the center of tourism, and all of that, we're still too high. And this is something we have to deal with, and we have to accept responsibility for as a police agency and as a city, as a county government, it's not just us, it's everybody, and really work on these numbers, because each one of those numbers represent a citizen. And so we need to work on that. So our goal through this process is to be more effective in how we control crime. You look at the trend line, how we've done over the last, you know, several years, this is through 2015, and it's fairly close to that currently. The red line represents just the average of what you take all those numbers and divide it out. So it stays fairly consistent. And, you know, I asked a couple people who were here long before me, what was the big dip in violent and property crime in 2008? We don't know. There could have been a variety of things that affected that, but that seems to be the aberration that goes outside of standard deviation. But for the most part, it stayed fairly consistent over that timeframe. Violent crime as well, down in the green line at the bottom. But the point of this is, it's something that we have to work on, and we want to see us dipping below that imaginary red line rather than above it. This is a hotspot map of the city, of where crime and calls for service occur. And you can see that it clusters in five areas of the city. And so these are the areas that we need to spend the most time and effort and energy on working and reducing those calls so we can get at the crime that's associated with it. Obviously, the brighter red, the location, the more calls for service we have. This is typical of what a crime analysis report might look like. This came from the study itself. These are some of the locations where we have the highest calls for service and our crime locations in the city. And you can see that it is, other than the police department, we don't have that much crime occurring there, but we have a lot of crime reported there. And so people come into the front counter and say, hey, I've been a victim of crime. So we go and take the reports, obviously. So you can see that crime clusters in locations, and we'll get into a little bit more of that later. So one of the selected recommendations, I'm not going to go through all the recommendations, would take forever in a day. But one of the selected recommendations is, they say, is to consider other strategies. And I think that that is important. So in the chart that you see here, here are some of the strategies. And if you could take that bar and scroll down, I just did a screenshot, so you won't be able to do that. But if you could take that bar and scroll down, you'd see a variety of strategies to reduce crime. On the right side is what happened with crime through neighborhood policing, the strategy that we have chosen, as well as a compstat model and departments throughout the nation. Now, these are obviously much larger cities. This is also coming on the end of the crack cocaine epidemic, so it's probably disproportionately a reduction. However, the point is, there's two main strategies in policing that have been used. And one is this compstat model. The other is neighborhood policing and problem solving. I have chosen for our department to move towards neighborhood policing and problem solving for a variety of reasons, which we'll get into. But this is our goal. Our goal with this is to let our heroes, the guys and women in blue, to do their job. And right now, they seem stymied, and calls for service crowding out the opportunity to police. And again, we'll get that further. So the focus of how we police is important. And if you look at the data, it would suggest that 61% of crime occurs in 10% of locations. So the theory, then, would be to police the problems that are the most problematic, the locations that are most problematic. 54% of crime approximately is committed by 10% of criminals. Rather than focusing on everybody, you focus on those who are most problematic. I just got this, the next bullet down here, 3.4 miles of the streets of Santa Cruz account for most of our fatal and serious injury collisions. And that came from Vision Zero, and that's being done through the county, as well as our Smart Streets program. So rather than randomly running traffic on streets that we don't have problems, it makes a lot more sense to focus on where the problems are. And you do that through either finding the right handler to control the offender, bringing the right manager to control the place, or their guardian to protect the victims. So overall, if you, I know it's a pretty small font, but compstat model versus neighborhood policing model, I think down at the bottom is the most salient point. Compstat model is kind of viewed as an occupational force, where stop and frisk and zero tolerance policing was the cry, and it wound up in federal lawsuits. Whereas the other side, it was neighborhood policing is more of a relational responsibility between the police and the community, working together to solve community problems. We cannot solve these problems without the community. It's as simple as that. And so our choice has been to move forward with this, a problem-oriented policing model where we look at crime, we analyze why it's occurring at a specific location and solve those problems. It's like when you have a neighborhood and you get a dope house in that neighborhood. Well, what starts happening in the neighborhood? That cancer, you know, metastasizes throughout the community. And then you start getting car burglaries, and then you get noise complaints, and you get all these other things. So if you can take out that cancer, that node, it can bring that community back to normalcy. And that's the purpose of problem-oriented policing. We get a lot of people who are addicted to alcohol hanging out at Front and SoCal, where we have a lot of calls for service. So we're working with that business on making sure that they secure the alcohol there so that they can't get it and steal it. That just makes a little bit of sense. And you watch, if we're able to successfully do that, the calls for service, the crime in that neighborhood will drop significantly. That diffusion of benefit is what we want to get in each of these neighborhoods. And it's going to be addressing those problems one by one. What we've asked our lieutenants to do is to be thoughtful about prioritizing the calls, prioritizing the problems, excuse me, in each neighborhood, be responsible for that, and figure out how to drive those crimes down in that neighborhood. And so when they focus and prioritize those, the bigger problems first, we can stay on top of those and start having that benefit of other crimes being addressed, just because we dealt with that one cancer cell, if you will. Neighborhood policing is decentralized. We also have redeployed every staff member to the field that we could possibly redeploy. There's a couple people that we didn't. One is a staff sergeant to help the lieutenants, and the sergeants run the organization. The other is our school resource officer, which right now, we think is really important. And then the third person is our gang officer, who is just doing a stellar job in keeping on top of the gang problems as part of the countywide gang task force, which is Watsonville, CHP, Capitola, and ourselves. And then we want to make sure that we're doing two other things that are important to me. One is that we're accountable for our crime control. Is crime going up or down in the neighborhood, and how does the community know? We want to make sure that we're posting that in a location where every community member can come on and see what's going on in their neighborhood, more than just dots, but looking at heat maps, looking at crime percentage totals, looking at the incidence of crime before, you know, the application of our response. And then the last one is community engagement. We want to make sure that we're getting feedback from the community, as well as building that relationship with the public, where we can employ their help to deal with many of these problems. For instance, if we're having a car burglary problem in the Upper West neighborhood, community members can help us by walking the neighborhood with flashlights at a certain time of night, if we can analyze that deep into the data. I know of one city, for instance, that got flashing collars for all their dogs, red and blue flashing collars. And they took the dogs out for a walk at nighttime, when they're most likely to have car burglary problems in the neighborhood. Didn't confront people, it's just that visual presence of a community that cared, and people outside. So there's many things and innovative ideas that we can do. So what gets in our way? Why can't the police do this? And if you look to the left side of the screen here, this came directly from CPSM. Departments average between 400 and 1,000 calls per 1,000 residents. The lower the number suggests a better policy on triaging non-emergency calls for service. Top of the page, you can see what Santa Cruz is. We're above the highest, we're the highest they've ever seen. So we're averaging almost 1,100 calls per 1,000 residents. And in my opinion, coming in from the outside and just taking a look at this, it's far too much. And we can get into the specifics of that. But the question is, then, how do we triage better? And that becomes a discussion point in a policy matter. So this is kind of, you know, tongue-in-cheek, but if you remember seeing this Lucy episode where the chocolate's going down the conveyor belt, and at first, it's, oh, that's just fine, you know, she eats one, and then packages two, and then the conveyor belt gets going faster and faster and faster, and then she's stuffing them in her hat and in her mouth, and then the lady comes in and yells, speed it up. That's what our officers feel like right now, that the chocolate is on a, the calls for service are on a high-speed conveyor belt, and then somebody else speeds it up. And it's to the point where many of them feel like they're at the water level. And so this is something that my responsibility is to help them fix. So our mantra has been, for many years, no call too small. If you call us, we'll come. And according to CPSM, that this is characteristic of a small-town mentality, of a small-town, you know, thought process. Now, Santa Cruz is not a San Francisco, but we are an urban area, and certainly, an area with urban problems. And so somehow, we have to take a look at this and figure out, what can we do to provide them the opportunity to actually police? Because in that margin between proactivity and reactivity is where we can find the greatest crime control. And I think that's what's important. I mean, some quotes from the thing, "It's an enormous misuse of emergency personnel," is what these experts were telling us. And here's just some of the areas that they took a look at and the frequency of calls. So, you know, we can't certainly not avoid taking reports on 1,500 crashes every year. But there are some that we shouldn't go to. Ordinance violations. It takes us, on average, 130 minutes to get there. And the reason for that is there's so many calls stacked up of those kind. So rather than just saying, we're just not going to go to them, the question becomes, well, how do we manage them and how do we deal with them in a thoughtful way? And then you can see the other ones for yourself. So we respond physically to about 68,000 calls a year. And a couple of you had asked me, well, wait a second, I thought the number was over 100,000. And we took a good, hard look at the data. And what we found out is that a lot of those calls are information-only calls. In other words, fires running code three through town. There's a person who's wanted from San Jose, might be in the area of Bolo, be on the lookout. So the calls we're actually responding to are 68,000. CPSM estimates that we could reduce up to 22,000 of those calls. I don't think we can reduce that many from looking at the information. But if we can reduce several calls a day, that gives our officers that margin, that time to be proactive. So calls for service are kind of a domino effect. The average wait time for non-emergency calls for service, the benchmark that CPSM says is acceptable is 15 minutes. is acceptable is 15 minutes. We're at 25 minutes on average. And then dispatch hold times are 16 minutes in and of themselves. So the dispatchers are sitting on that call for 16 minutes. The reason they're sitting on that call is there's no units available. So what I hear frequently is the dispatcher telling the officers or the sergeant, "We just sent you to a burglary in progress, but I'm also holding a camping call, a disturbance at such and such location, this location, that location." And it's kind of like when your mother tells you to clean your room, and sweep the garage, and wash the car, and it's just so overwhelming that sometimes you just give up. And I don't want to put our officers in that position. And we're dealing with them broadcasting too much at once. However, these numbers, the more backed up it gets, it's that domino effect of it continues to elongate, and then people just get, again, fatigued listening to that. Priority calls for service, the benchmark is five minutes. We're at almost seven minutes. And dispatch hold time is 2.3 minutes. So if we can get rid of that hold time because we're more efficient, we can get pretty close to those numbers without really making too much of a stretch. And I think that's something we certainly want to head towards. Call miss management. So it slows response times and stacks more calls. It shortens the benchmark time of calls when officers are there. What this means is, when officers on scene in most departments, they're there for almost 30 minutes, 28.7 minutes. Here, we're there for 25 minutes. Because you're constantly thinking, I got to get to the next call, the next call, citizen's waiting, the next call's holding. And so what we want them to do is slow down a little bit, take their time to actually talk to people, and do a little bit more thorough investigations when you have the opportunity. It's also a little bit dangerous, because on average, the average city sends 1.7 officers to a call, we send 1.6. Which means that often, we're not sending enough officers to these calls. And that's more dangerous for the citizens, it's also more dangerous for our officers. So they came up with a policy many cities use called the Rule of 60. And that is 60% of your officers should be in patrol, and that 60% of their day should be consumed by calls for service. In other words, 40% of the day should be available for proactive policing, for handling administrative duties, for having lunch, for, you know, this isn't a take a break thing. Right now, most of our officers don't take lunch during the day, and they certainly don't get breaks. So this is called the saturation index. And you can see the numbers as it speaks here. And very frequently, we're well above those numbers. And so we got, again, this is what we need to fix. When officers experience workload of greater than 60%, as that middle box says, they become increasingly reactive, waiting for the next call. And through much of the day, our SI surpassed the threshold. So 60% of our officers should be designated to patrol, so here's our current numbers. We have 94 funded positions, however, the city manager has approved us to go up to 99 positions if we could fulfill these numbers, and we're not there right now. Right now, we have seven vacancies. This has been tough to hang on to people. And we're interviewing people, I'll get into that in a second, but one of the things we're hearing is that, why do I want to do this here for the same or less money than somewhere else, I can work literally half as hard? And I understand that. But I'm thankful for the ones who want to be here because they want to work hard. And that's what most of our department is. We have five currently in training. We have five unable to work because of injuries. That's actually risen in the last couple days to seven, so we can take away from that, but they'll be back shortly, we hope. Forty-seven in patrol, that includes sergeants and lieutenants. And then we have 14 in neighborhood policing teams that can augment patrol if the need be. And then five administrative assignments, such as the chiefs, IA sergeant, and a staff sergeant. We have 10 investigators and nine CSOs. One officer there is not correct. So that's where our current staffing is. We also have a lot of civilian, not a lot of civilian staff, we have, I think, 15 additional civilian staff working at different functions in the department, such as records and property and so forth. We've also extended three job offers in the last week to new people who are going to go to the academy. But we're also trying to find people who are lateral transfers because they can hit the ground running. And I think that's kind of important. This is a spaddle representation of officer-initiated calls for service. You can see where the officers spend their time being proactive in the city, and where they're calling out that they're contacting people. Almost mirrors exactly what you saw in the crimes for service. And this is where they're at. The central question becomes the levels of service in Santa Cruz desires. Do you desire greater crime control by allowing officers time to be proactive? Then how do we do it? We can do it one of a couple ways. Add officers, or first try to reconfigure the staffing that we have in the current calls for service to meet those numbers. And I think that's as we're going to push forward here. So this is, again, a look at the current budget as it stands right now, and then as we move forward. Now, one of the things that staffing comparison that we need to take a look at is, over the last decade, we've added about 9,000 residents to the city. We've not added more officers. That'd be like taking a city the size of Scotts Valley and not having any officers to patrol it. So we're currently at 1.46 officers per 1,000 residents. With council approval, and the over-hire, if we could fill those positions, we'd be at 1.52. That would be a huge blessing if we could get up to that level and get all those positions filled. I mean, that would be a gigantic relief. Available for duty because of injuries, we're down in the 1.3 area. The national target, which CPSM talks about, is 2.0 officers per 1,000. But I want to be honest with that. California is normally much lower. Most cities in California are not at the 2 per 1,000 level. But that doesn't mean that that's not a goal to achieve someday. So what are our staffing concerns? About three out of 100 are hired. For every 100 people that take the test, we wind up, you know, going through the funnel and hiring three. It's tough. And then attrition is high. Burnout is a substantial risk for injury rates, and I think that's one of the reasons we have several people on light duty. So here's the tough part. Of the last nine hired, Dan Filippo has been doing a great job getting people through the door, and he's really worked on a marketing campaign, and we've been finding the bodies. But of the last nine we've hired, two failed the academy, one quit during the academy, three quit during training, and the exit interviews were, "This is too busy, I can't keep up with the workload." And then for now, the other three are doing well. So this three-pronged approach. One is reduce the demand, eliminate some of the calls for service through differential response, that doesn't mean we won't respond to them, we have to find different ways to respond to them. Increase patrol resources by reconfiguring the patrol schedule, which we're currently working on, or hire more police officers to get fully staffed. And all three of those are underway. We've impaneled a committee inside the department to look at calls for service and how to reduce those unnecessary calls, to be more in line with what other police agencies are doing around the country and around the state. I can go into a lot of examples of this, but for the sake of time, I think we'll hold off on that. Consider different staffing configurations, such as 12-hour shifts or 10-hour shifts with more squads. And so Arnold Vasquez, under the direction of Deputy Chief Martinez, has been working on that diligently. This, it's important for us to take a look at these, and we're heading down that road. Deputy Chief Filippo has been doing the calls for service, they've already met with members of the department. Now, the next step is to meet with members of the community, to make sure that we're in line with what the community expects. And then leverage all department resources to address these hotspots, these hotspot locations as they come up, including the hot people. One of the things we've implemented as a program, we're using one of our CSOs as a crime analyst to discuss some of the most people who are most problematic in the city. So we've identified top people, 10 top people who are getting arrested the most or causing the most problems, focusing on them and really working with the DA's office, the sheriff, and the chief of probation to solve the problems with those people. I met with them, had lunch with them, we all discussed it, we agreed. And then the very next week, I just want to give credit to the DA, sends me an email, "Hey, this is one of your guys, I want you to know we're taking this to the mat." And so one individual has been arrested over 200 times, is on probation multiple times. And then he threatened to kill some of our officers. And it was a real threat. So, long story short, the DA took that seriously, we're working together, focusing on those things, and I think that we can hopefully have some impact on that. Examining staffing levels, I think we've covered this, this whole idea of no call too small, but the point is, we got to think a little bit differently. So I think it becomes a choice, a political choice, to be very honest. Do we continue to provide police services as they are now, or take steps to restructure how to respond to the demand? And this is going to be a tough thing to walk through, but I think it's important for us to understand what CPSM said, what their ideas are, what others are doing, so that we can push forward in this vein. Reengineering process, we went through the talk with our staff, the community, the city leadership, and then boiled it down to get our mission statement. And that was what was reflected earlier. The mission statement went through our sergeants, the officers, and then ultimately the command staff to come up with this document. I would, again, encourage any community member to read it so they know what we're about. And this all came from them at those meetings that we did initially for the first several months. And then look for the diffusion of benefit as we march through these problems and make sure that we're solving them. We're examining the staffing formulas, as I mentioned earlier. I think this is an important point. For every 1,700 calls we manage better, it's the equivalent of adding one additional police officer. And this is a cost savings measure as much as a better way to police. Especially when you take a look at the cost of a fully benefited officer is 183,000, and a fully benefited sergeant is 208,000. So if you're adding a dozen officers, you're talking an enormous amount of money. And then lastly, this is what our new neighborhood map looks like. This is the community, and each lieutenant is noted up in the upper-left corner in the proper color-coded part of the map. And any community member can click on the map on our website and find out who the lieutenant is, and shoot them an email or get them information about what's happened in their neighborhood. And lieutenants will respond pretty quickly. So I submit to you this report, and I certainly answer any questions that you might have at your leisure.
Well, at this point, is there any council member that'd like to ask any questions regarding the report? I'll ask one before we go to public comment. Now, you mentioned that there are external forces that hinder the police from doing their job. And it looks like when I saw that statistic over the last eight years, that our crime rate has been relatively constant. And so what are those things, other than the fact that the council is directed over filling police staffing and resources? What are those external factors that we, as a council, can help address to help influence that aside from the recommendations today?
I think there are several things that council can take a look at and help us with. One is that for many years, we have sold to the community to pick up the phone and dial 911 on everything. So unfortunately, the expectation of the community becomes, I pick up the phone, I call 911, I want a cop right now. Well, it may not be an emergency call for service, and we're not going to be there for two hours. Well, alls that does is set us up for failure, the city up for failure, and the community member up for failure. So we've got to retrain and rethink that, of using the non-emergency number when it's not an emergency. The second thing is, we certainly understand the dynamic of the court system, the justice system here in Santa Cruz, as well as California. And for crime control to be effective, it has to be certain, swift, and fair. I don't think we can reach those two numbers, the certain and swift. And the reason for that is, when we put people on probation for five times over, they didn't learn the first time, I doubt they're going to learn the second or third time. So this really has to become a public policy matter for our entire community, of how do we deal with that? And this lays, you know, the courts have to help us and understand, and I think the courts are willing to understand, if the community lets them know what the desire of this community is, is to, whether it's to be a little bit tougher on sentencing. When we arrest a gang member or a felon with a firearm multiple times, that person at some point needs to go to prison, to learn the lesson, to be rehabilitated, you know, because of that. The other third thing I think is important is, you know, much of the homeless thing has been thrust on the shoulders of the police department as a solution. I think we've really come to the realization, this is not a solution. And that we need to work, and we are working, in concert with the rest of city government to really work on solving these problems. And I couldn't be more proud of the other department heads, the managers' office, of how we've all taken this task on together. But this also has to come from the county. This is a county responsibility. They have the budget and the funding for it, they also have the legislative mandate, and we could really use their assistance in helping drive the policy forward on how we collectively deal with these problems as a city. So those are just some really quick things that might be able to be done from a legislative perspective.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown, and then councilmember Crone.
Thank you for being here this evening and for all the work you do, and I appreciate the report. It's helpful to, and I read through the report in detail, so many of the things that you talked about, have been talking about resonate with the statistics that I have seen. I am wondering about a couple of things. One, in terms of the recommendations that are coming to us, just a little, if you could talk a little bit about the community service officer model versus the role of the Rangers, and, you know, just to help us and others in the room have a better understanding of why we've increased our, and again, some of you have been involved in these discussions over the years, that I haven't been on the council previously. But just a little bit about that. And then a second question is, you know, I really appreciate the direction to move in to neighborhood policing and setting up the regions and teams. And I've been to a couple of the events where lieutenants have spoken to very energetic audiences, and so I think it's great to be moving in this direction. I do wonder if you've considered a model that includes some kind of satellite, I'm just thinking about places in different parts of the city that people can go to, you know, either be part, you know, just communicate their concerns, you know, maybe having some satellite offices might reduce some of the calls that go in through central dispatch. I don't know, but I just would be interested to hear if you've thought about that at all.
Sure. First of all, the community service officer model, that has been done in many police departments to relieve the workload that is experienced by officers taking reports, some accident reports, some minor theft reports, and so forth. It's been used effectively here, and I think it's an important model. We also have them in positions in the side of the department where we don't want to have sworn officers doing that. Because a person who's sworn and fully trained, post-certified, all that kind of thing, really can do, can only do things that nobody else can do. And so we really want to save them for the stuff they need to be used for. So it has been effective in doing that. I think also, some of the city's thinking in the past has been, it's pretty difficult to hire and find police officers, and this is a little bit less expensive model, the CSO, so they're hard-working employees, so maybe we've gone towards that. And I think that was, in my opinion, a very proper thing to do. The Rangers, I think, fulfill a fantastic role, have done a great job in this city. And I think that we can't speak highly enough of the people that have, you know, have done that. Again, they can't do the full scope of things. And so part of the problem becomes, if they tell somebody, "Hey, you got to leave the park, no I'm not," there's nobody to stand behind them. Part of the idea to bring them over to the police department is they have somebody, a team of officers standing behind them now in each area of the city. And working with that team and be embedded in that team allows them to do their jobs, be a little bit more effective. And then as you saw from the report, there's a lot of backstory information stuff that has to take place with people who are 832 PC certified. has to take place with people who are 832-PC certified, which would mean that the police department's really in the best position to do that. And so we think that the Rangers can continue to do a stellar job, providing a great high level of service throughout the city, but mostly focused on the parks.
Just in the second question on-
Yes.
-satellite offices, some kind of place-
Yes.
Outside of the downtown.
Yeah, one of the things we have discussed is having the, maybe some of the libraries, for instance, have a spot where the officers can go and write reports. And so we have discussed that. We've also discussed fire stations, I know they've tried that in the past. But we've also, the lieutenants have been pretty committed to making sure that they're meeting with community members on a regular basis, so that they can have face-to-face contact in each neighborhood with community members. And I know that they've been responsive. I've already been to several meetings with several of the lieutenants, meeting with community groups, and so they've been doing a fantastic job. And I know that, I'm hearing from community members, "Hey, I spoke with Lieutenant Lamas, he did a fantastic job, thank you so much." So I know that they're doing it on their own as well. And so that's, I think that's a step in the right direction.
Councilmember Crone, then Councilmember Chase?
Yeah. I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Brown's question, because it's still not clear to me. When a CSO tells somebody to leave the park, are they going to leave the park, or do they also need backup?
Well, CSOs normally aren't in that position. They can write some citations like Rangers, but CSOs are also embedded on those teams.
I was looking at this, the differences, there's a little bit more for CSOs, it seems like, as far as pay goes. I was looking at the city manager, what different pay ranges. And I'm just wondering, do you see a future at all of going, say we had 30 or 40 CSOs, and would that cut down on the number of sworn officers?
I don't see us being able to go that direction, because you still have a lot of crimes that need to be responded to. We do see a path, however, for Rangers, should they choose to go into the CSO or sworn side, or a staff position inside the department, that this is a career path that they could take, should they want to. But I don't see us changing the ratio a whole lot, because again, it takes a sworn officer to do much of the workload that we're tasked with.
Could you talk a little bit about the use of force? And I'm looking at page seven of the recommendations, but also page 77, and then there's also some recommendations on use of force for park rangers on page 105. And I'm just wondering, you know, one is begin tracking all uses of force by officers as defined by department policy, begin tracking use of force proactive data by individual officer, and not only by incident. I was just wondering, have we been doing this already, or is this all new, these recommendations from 57 to 61?
Yeah, most of what we've been doing already. And we were kind of puzzled when we saw this, because we actually do report this out, as you know, on our website, as well as to the Public Safety Committee. I think what they were looking for is a review process of a use-of-force expert on all of these cases. Well, most of our sergeants are use-of-force experts. And every sergeant reads every single use, not every sergeant reads everyone, but a sergeant reads every single use of force that we do in the city. What they suggested is that go into IA-Pro, where it could, where we can track that use of force. We certainly can do that. My thought process on that is, there's been some recent research that would suggest that the EIS system, early warning systems, are not that effective, that we should look more at trauma that the officers experience, rather than the number of citations or that kind of thing that the officers are involved in. So the greater chance of a complaint or a systemic problem with the officer is more related to the trauma they've experienced as part of their duties. As far as the Rangers are concerned, if you're 832-PC certified, which they are, you have to report that out to the state every year. And so we have to report out every use of force that results in injury to the state. And there is no mechanism in place to do those kinds of things currently for the Rangers, but that will take place under us, because that's something that we understand that we just do regularly.
Thanks. And also just the use of force for the Rangers, it says that there's been three incidences in the past 18 months, is that what you know of to be true as well? And I was under the impression that maybe park rangers don't get into use-of-force issues that they're calling for backup.
I know of, I know one for sure, but if they say three, then I would suggest that that probably is the case. Actually, I know of two. One was a ranger did a stellar job, officer was fighting a guy, the same guy that went into the school with the machete, and so we're fighting him downtown, and the officer was in a tough fight, and the ranger helped our officer out and had to use force in the process. The other, another one that I'm aware of, a ranger was punched in the face, and the ranger, you know, foot-pursued and tackled the guy. So those are considered uses of force. I don't know what the other one is, because it might have happened before I got here. But, so they can use force, they have been trained to do arrest and control, to use, but now at the police department, our, what we want to make sure is that we use the minimal amounts of force possible to overcome the resistance that they're facing. And that is in-house training that we will provide on an ongoing basis to the Rangers, to make sure that they're in line with what's common throughout policing.
Last question is about complaints on page six of the recommendations, professional standards. Have these been implemented too? Because develop a protocol for at least monthly contact with complainants to advise them of the status of the investigation of their complaint. This would come as great news to many people who have filed complaints, and then it sort of falls into a black hole, and they never hear, even when they ask a year later, there is no response. And how are we doing now?
We are going to be notifying people every month, we'll have, make sure that a letter is written to them, that they will have some type of documentation in their hand. I think some of the issue is, sometimes people want more information than we can give them by law, but we'll still make contact with them and make sure that they're informed of what's, where their complaint lies.
Yeah, a lot of times, people just want to know that you're, somebody cares, and taken seriously.
Yeah, and I can tell you, these all are taken seriously. One of the other suggestions with, the IA sergeant meets with the chief regularly. Well, his office is about 20 feet from mine, so he walks in there literally three times a week. So we're working on those suggestions.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, as someone who's a member and been on the Public Safety Committee for, I think since the time I've been on the council, I can guarantee you that these complaints are taken with the utmost of seriousness and investigated thoroughly. There's reports that take place annually, and the officers that are in charge and assigned to investigate those through Internal Affairs, they are available to take calls and will respond upon request by any constituent, any member of the public that submits a concern or even wants to follow up. So, I mean, on that point, I would say, maybe it's a matter of having some information. If someone's sent, made a comment to you, that information's available, and I think those people can readily follow up. So I'm not sure if you were speaking to something in particular-
Yeah, it hasn't happened in several cases, but, you know, we can follow up. He's assuring us that monthly reports will be taking place, because I know folks who've made complaints, and it's been a year-
And I just want to add-
And still nothing.
I just want to add too, on the Public Safety Committee, we do get a list of, you know, counting of uses of force too. So it is taken, you know, taken seriously, there is a tally, and those of us on that committee do see those detailed reports.
City manager, Bernard-
The other layer of oversight that we have, just to point out, is the independent police auditor, who also reviews the complaints and provides recommendations to the police department and to the Public Safety Committee related to those complaints as well, and also is available to the public as well.
Chris, if you don't go-
Just if I can just finish, and if you have somebody that has not heard from us, if you can give me their name, I'll make sure they hear from us.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Is that it? Councilmember Chase?
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for the report, which is data-driven, and I really appreciate that. And I think what's interesting about that is that 16 of the recommendations mention the RMS system, the records management system, which is what provides a lot of the data and is incredibly problematic. So I know that that is a big budget request, and so I think it would be helpful to let council know what we can anticipate in terms of what you think that would be, what your request would be, and the timeline of that, so that we can consider that, because I think it's incredibly important if we want to continue to see this type of analysis and these types of improvements.
Sure. Please take this with a grain of salt, because we haven't done the RFP, so we can't really know for sure what it's going to cost. The systems will range about $1 million, but again, we're dividing that between multiple agencies. And if you stretch it out over a multi-year period, it becomes very reasonable. And so what we heard today was that our annual cost for running the system, the maintenance, upkeep, and all that kind of thing, including servers in the future and so forth, should be around $70,000, maybe a little bit more. And then the actual cost of the system is about $200,000 for everybody per year. So we should be able to do this for around $100,000, $150,000 a year.
I appreciate that. That actually isn't very much considering the improvement and what we would get for it, and to be connected with the other law enforcement agencies, or at least one of them, I think is critical as well.
Yeah, all four are in.
Yeah, that's great.
And just correct me if I'm wrong, but it's been in our capital improvement program budget for some time now, right?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember, or-
I just had one last comment. I just wanted to also thank you for just mentioning, in response to Councilmember Crone's question, the impact of trauma, and how that impacts, well, really, everybody involved in public safety. So I'm interested to hear more about that.
One of the recommendations, just to glom onto that, is officer wellness. And so one of our strategies in our leadership plan is really working on officer wellness and employee improvement, and so including succession planning and all that. And I just really, again, Dan Filippo, well before I got here, had already started a mentoring program. And so we're really trying to mentor our people, keep an eye on things like abuses of substances, because this is, there's so much trauma in the job. So I just want to, you know, we want to head that direction, but it had even more so there.
Councilmember Ryan, and then Councilmember Matthews?
Oh, I can't help but, you know, be just completely stunned about the level of crime. That really jumped out at me at the report. You know, we've all had numbers, we see different numbers in terms of where Santa Cruz is in comparison, and it doesn't really matter what scale, whether it's the FBI or somebody else collecting data, we always end up being on the top in an area that I'd rather like to be average. And so, you know, you look at those numbers, and, you know, you're doing these different plans, but are there plans to go after specific types of crimes? Like, when I look at property crime, it's so high. Is there a strategy, aside from looking at it, you know, piecemeal through the city, but to have an overall, I guess, strategy in how to lower that number?
Well, that's very important. Just let me throw a word of caution, in when you look at crime data, one is, you have to take a look at our city, the reality of our city. Again, it's the county seat, the center of this region, a tourist attraction, I mean, three to four million people a year go through the boardwalk. All of that really affects the amount of people and the amount of crime in a city, including the jail being here and all these things. So you can't compare this to, for instance, Lincoln, California. You know, they're going to, it's a bedroom community, it's completely different. Now, having said that, it's still too high, and we need to figure out how to get that down. So if you took this, a look at this, and actually figured this is a city of 100,000, probably be a little bit more realistic in terms of the crime rate. However, it's not what we have, so we're going to fix that. So the strategy is this, each community told us what their priorities were, theft, theft, and theft in many of these communities. And so each lieutenant has set their priorities for their communities. And their job is to figure out, based on the micro-problem-solving side, how to fix each of those problems. So I'm studying the overall department-wide philosophy of policing, which is neighborhood policing and problem-solving. Now, their job is to drill down for each of those communities and figure out what specific tactic are they going to use to reduce those problems? So for instance, just go back to CVS, 189 thefts or crimes at that location in one year. That's unacceptable. And so what we need to do is, if we can drive the crime down there, it frees up officers to be more proactive. So his, what he did is, he went and looked at the environmental conditions that are allowing that crime to take place at that location, talked to the owners, or the managers, worked with them. You know, they're going to go through a stage of, and Carter Jones is here, Carter was with him doing this, going through the stage of locking up the alcohol first, if that doesn't work, putting a security guard at the front door, demanding backpacks be left at the front, you know, let me see your receipt before you get out like Eric Costco. So the more they do that, the more that impacts that crime and drops it down. And that's the goal that we're after. So I can't give you the specific overall strategy, other than we're focusing on the constant criminals that we're dealing with, and really trying to, if we have to give them 365 days in jail, one day at a time, then we're going to do it with those 10. But 10 is a pretty small number, and when you take a look at the amount of thieving that we have in the city. But we have to start someplace, and the first 10 we put out, I asked my crime analysts today, all 10 were contacted, all 10 were arrested. And, you know, and then the first group. And so we want to make sure that we're going to hold them accountable at some level. If probation can't do it, because they're overwhelmed, then we'll do it as best we can.
And so taking this, you know, employing these strategies, do you have an estimate on when you think we might see a difference, like might see crime drop, or these figures improve? I understand we're an outlier as a city, and it's hard to compare ourselves to anybody else. We're a town of 65,000 that has a university and a major tourist attraction. There aren't a lot of other cities to be able to look at that and compare. But I still do think it's important, and you point that out, to acknowledge that our crime rate is pretty high. And so I'm glad you do acknowledge that, but if these things we're putting in place are successful, how long does it take to see a difference?
Well, it's going to take some time. You know, I would hope that as we get our teams in place, and I was just, you know, looking at what the statistics of what they are doing already, and they've just been nailing it. I mean, they've been all over it. They've made a lot of arrests, taken a lot of guns off the street already. Those things are going to have an effect. And I can't give you a percentage of decrease, can't prognosticate that. However, I can tell you that if they continue to do their jobs, focus on the major problems first, and take care of those problems, you will see a reduction at some point citywide, and that people can look at. Now, I think what, you know, what we want to be able to do is say, okay, look, we took care of this problem. Therefore, this problem, we can know for sure that this problem was taken care of, this was, you know, 100 crimes. And then the community can look at that. There are so many things that influence the actual crime rate. You know, if the economy takes a left-hand turn, we could see more problems. The heroin addiction level, you know, more thefts. I mean, these are all things that influence the crime rate that we may or may not have control over, but we can take a look at these problems and say, we solved this problem, here's how we know that. And here's what we did to do that. And then be accountable to the public for that.
Okay. And, you know, you mentioned several ways we could address improving staffing. You were saying that possibly hiring more officers. Do you have an actual number of officers that you think we should hire? Like, when you look at those rates of, like, the average of California cities, how many more would that mean?
Well, I would like to just get up to what the city manager's already approved. And my thinking on that, councilmember, is, once we manage the resources that we've already been given well, and it's not working, then I don't have any problem coming back to council and saying, I need more officers, and figuring that piece out. But I want to get up to full staffing first, and then use those extra five bodies that we've been graciously given. Get those folks running on all cylinders, and then we can take a look at that, reduce the attrition levels, and get people healthy, which is another significant issue for us. There's two officers I've never met, they've been off that long. And it's your workman's comp issues, I mean, there's all kinds of things boiled into this that's very complex. So once we get that done, and finish up to that 99 level that we've already been authorized, then I have no problem coming back to council and saying, I need more.
Okay. And then, can you give examples of the types of calls for service that we can handle differently? I know you've mentioned a few in some of the community meetings. You know, I heard one time someone call from a restaurant demanding the police show up to make the restaurant give them their food for free, because they had bad service. So I was at a table, I'm like, oh my dear God, they're calling 911 for this. So how, what types of calls do you think, I mean, that was a ridiculous one, which I hope isn't very common, but how would you take some of the more common calls that are coming and redirect them?
So I think, yeah. So there's a lot of, I'd rather look at bigger categories. I mean, I can go into a lot of anecdotal stories that I have in the past, and you've all heard those. But- But we do follow-up phone calls. Somebody calls and then we'll call them back. And the people are sometimes like, why are you calling me? Just handle the problem. Well, that takes time. A lot of information stuff, you know, let's have an officer go to this location just to provide information. Non-injury collisions, that's really a civil matter. It's not a police matter. It's between two insurance companies. And so frequently what happens is people say, I want a cop to come anyway, and then we send them. And sometimes we'll send two officers. So these are, and frequently when we write those reports, the insurance companies will now call us back and say, I don't like how you wrote this report. I want it changed to have this person be responsible and try to put us in the middle of it.
Wow.
We do, there's a lot of those types of calls. Again, I don't want to say we're just going to not respond to them, but somebody, we can manage it better how it's responded to. Like, for instance, maybe it's going to have to wait for the neighborhood policing team when they come in on their Monday, rather than having patrol respond to it if it's not an emergency. So let's let patrol do the emergency stuff. Let's let neighborhood policing and the teams or other city members handle the other things that maybe don't need to be handled by a police officer. Just before I came, I talked to Chief Rowley about medical responses. So if a person's laying on the front yard someplace, they may be having a seizure, they may be high, it could be a variety of things, and we send two police officers to handle that a thousand times a year. And so why isn't paramedics doing that? Because what we're going to do is look at them and say, yep, they need paramedics. So those are the kind of things I think that we can be a little bit more thoughtful about, and Jim agreed completely, Chief Rowley did. But now the devil's in the details, how do you work that out? We don't want to send an engine of four firefighters to do that. So this becomes a conversation.
Great. I do have other questions, but I, this is fascinating. Right.
Yeah, there'll be time afterwards also. So maybe Councilmember Matthews, this would be the final question before we open it up for public comment.
And it may be covered later, but you had these kind of broad sections here, and I gather those are pulled from the big report. Your priority-
Can you talk into the mic?
Oh, the priority tasks you set before you. Those seem to be, some of them, internal operation changes, but some of them are either, some of them involve significant changes in the way we operate with our partners, whether it's the courts or the county or whatever. And some of them are capital. And what triggered this question was your referral to the records management and technology. So at what point will you be telling us, aside from the internal stuff, where you need maybe some more assistance from us, whether it's budget or engagement?
Sure. I think that's an ongoing dialogue to have with each of you and to the council in general. My way of trying to handle these things is to try to do it myself and sit down, for instance, and work things out with the chief of probation, the DA, the sheriff, and have those conversations. If I reach a wall that I can't overcome, I have no problem going to the city manager and working with council to say, we really need your help on this. This is, now it's time to throw down.
And if I could just respond to that, as this evolves, and I always consider this a process of evolution, but it's helpful for us to know where you are because those are a lot of the complaints we get. Why, we did a little email exchange today on this.
Yes.
What's going on? Why is this happening? And to the extent we know progress is being made or not, that just helps us respond to the public.
Sure, I appreciate that. And we can certainly do better in that area, making sure council's fully informed of what we're doing and why. You know, just like that conversation we had this morning about the, you know, the gun thing. Those are, you know, those are the things that really need to be focused on here locally. At what point, you know, we're going to allow certain people who are dangerous to society continue to walk around? And that does become a pinch point. Part of this is education, because I get a lot of complaints from people that, you know, why'd you let this guy out of jail? And I'm like, well, I don't control the jail. And the sheriff, if he had a choice, he wouldn't let him out either. So these are, those are the things, education can be a hugely important matter that the council could help us with.
Okay, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, to that, I was just going to ask, are you going to be sharing this report with your colleagues at the county level? Will the city manager, I guess, be showing this report as well to your colleagues? I think that, you know, they're a community partner, we really need their help in this. And so I hope that there'll be meetings about this report with our county officials.
Yeah, certainly we could do that. I know you've already shared it with the sheriff at least, because there's some recommendations related to the sheriffs in here as it relates to the processing of prisoners and that sort of thing. So yes.
Great. And that's an area where city council members could help too. We could go talk to our elected colleagues at the county level as well.
Sure.
I'll just say, before we open up the public comment, I thought those neighborhood meetings were outstanding in terms of like bringing out a category. I had a, one of the West Side residents, Nathaniel, told me that he said it was the best public meeting he'd ever attended in terms of having the number of folks that were engaged and participating in the process. So I thought it was a good rollout, and it's nice to see this more, kind of more robust discussion about how we're moving forward. So before we have any further questions from council, I'd like to make this opportunity to open it up to the public for comment. And the first speaker is a representative of Huff, who wanted to take some additional time. So you have four minutes, Mr. Norris. And then anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter, please line up to my left, and we'll allow to begin. So Mr. Norris, you have the floor.
Members of the community, Mayor, City Council, Chief Mills. First of all, David Silva, I'm sure if he could be here today, would like to maybe join in some of my comments, maybe make some different ones. As most of you may know, he died about a week and a half ago in Maputo, Mozambique, probably of pneumonia, and he was buried there a few days ago. The problem with this report for me is that, is what it doesn't say. Although I'll talk a bit about what it does say and my concerns about that. I mean, I'm really speaking to people who want to see some fundamental changes in how the priorities of mass incarceration, policing, the drug war, treatment of the homeless take place, not sort of, you know, shifting around the deck chairs or even making substantive changes in focus, which is not necessarily bad. But if you have criminalization of the homeless as a priority, this is the group I'm concerned about, then no matter how you change it, you don't really change it at all. Folks outside who were forced away from the San Lorenzo campground by its closing on February 28th, who had no real place to go, the East River Street campground, that is to say the barbed wire locked boneyard campground with fewer spaces that are, where tents are shoved cheek by jowl with each other, and you can't leave freely, is not in any way equivalent to even replacing what the San Lorenzo campground provided. So if you're then going to go after people with increased citations masquerading as a census or doing this more intensely than before, you're simply reverting to the old policies. I asked Andy, who has been occasionally responsive to my questions, not always, and not recently really, but a number of questions. We had a dialogue. Huge amounts of money have come from this council and prior councils and have gone into harassing the poor through the ordinances that you have created. Will the money you save by cutting back on massive infraction enforcement of sleeping ban and nighttime park bans go into real social services? Or we hear more, oh, I wonder why the county isn't helping us with this kind of stuff as we usually do? Drug war money, asset seizure money is being used by the police department, Andy writes me. Why is that? I thought we're beyond this asset seizure stuff. You know, you can use all kinds of rhetoric, this is a lawful byproduct of criminal activity. There's nothing about that in this report. How much money has been seized from folks accused of what crimes? What are the records here? Now, as of use of force, which was discussed here, and it's good to hear that people are interested in knowing, when are the police doing the chokeholds, the tasers, the drawing of the baton, the drawing of the weapon? These are important issues, but the public doesn't really get to know about this. I asked Andy for stats on this. He didn't give me specifics about when these things were done. And this is discretionary. The police department decides to keep these stats under wraps. So I don't see any of this changing either. What about the issues of, well, quality of life downtown? That means, of course, don't sit next to my business even if it's closed. If you're sitting outside a closed store, like Alpha Graphics and three individuals were doing in the rain about a week ago, you'll get forced out into the rain by police officers from Andy's police force. Or at least that was their account, and I don't necessarily discount it. We have the unconstitutional stayaway laws. Will they continue to be enforced? And I see that I'm out of time already.
Do you want to finish your sentence?
I need to finish more than that.
You can just hand it out, and we'll be happy to take a look at it. Next speaker.
I may send it in to you.
Hello, my name is Jane Becker. I have lived and worked in Santa Cruz for 35 years. What has struck me about what is going on with the Public Safety Committee and City Council is that no one seems to really be addressing what is the elephant in the room. And the elephant in the room is the fact that we have over 1,000 homeless people in Santa Cruz, people that come with no money, no savings, no place to live, no job. And they come here to live on the streets. Many of them are doing drugs. And as much as I feel for these people, the reality is that many of these people are stealing to support habits, they're breaking into cars, they're stealing bikes and chopping the parts, they are committing home burglaries, they are walking into businesses, I see this downtown quite a bit, and taking what they want to take and leaving. What I'm going to suggest is that the city make a shift from anybody that wants to come here, can come here, to if you come here with no money, no job, no place to live, we will give you immediate food, attention to any immediate medical condition. And the next question is, how do we get you home? How do we get you bus fare? How do we get you airfare? There is no housing here for you, not realistically. There are very few jobs here. Santa Cruz is not a place just to come, just to hang out, because you're going to be living on the streets. We need to have a shift that says, this is where we stop as a town. And then perhaps we will see the lessening of service calls to the police because we've eliminated a source, a causation of crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. I was very informative, and I appreciate all the work that was put into it. I have, I think, maybe four questions and maybe one observation. And I don't, you know, much more than I do and maybe most of you do, but I know in some communities, there's, non-emergency number is a 411 number that people can call, which seems like a very simple way, and that may not be possible here, I don't know, but that seems like that could be a possible easy fix to the police department getting, or 911 getting, having to field a lot more calls than they are. So I guess I just have a question regarding that. I don't know if there's been any consideration, again, just cost and expense reduction and increased community policing in terms of having more police on bicycles. I, Santa Cruz, I've been here since the late 70s, and, you know, probably like 15 years ago, it seemed like we did have a number of police on bikes, but that has, it doesn't seem like that's happening much. And I see police on ATVs and that type of thing, but that's not, you know, it's hard to talk to somebody when their ATV is running and they've got their helmet on and it's the whole nine yards. So that's just another question of mine. I know you said in your presentation that, I think you, I don't know how many community forums you had in different parts of Santa Cruz. I was curious if there was any community forum in Beach Flats, whether there was, did you have? I feel like, I guess, because you said, as part of that, you said that each community sort of forum told you what the issue was, which is theft, theft, theft. I guess my concern is that isn't the whole community. Those are people who feel comfortable coming to a community forum with the police. There are people who don't feel comfortable with that. You know, that's, it's just, it's a problem, and you know that. But I feel like if the only people you're speaking, responding to are the people that come to the forum, that's not the entire community.
Thanks, Grant.
Okay, I have one last thing to say.
Yeah, wrap it up.
Okay, I will, thank you. And I notice, and this is just a broader question, but I noticed that often when we have these things, there's, like at the moment, there's seven uniformed officers here. I never know when that's going on. Are those officers on pay right now? They're in uniforms, so there's, and there's un-uniformed officers and staff here from the police department. So that's another question.
Thank you, thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this after the report, prior to bringing it back to council? Okay, sir, you're up next.
Hi, guys. My name is Gary Taylor. I've been living in Santa Cruz County for 30 years.
Speak into the mic, please.
My name is Gary Taylor. I've been living in the county for about 30 years. I got into an automobile accident about two years ago. And I'm just going to tell you a little bit of background. I was homeless in this city for about a year, almost a year and a half. So I know what it's like out there. I know exactly what it's like. I also, without any help, no one, got out of it. Worked, took a lot of hard work. I have some suggestions that you guys might be interested in, I don't really know. I'm not familiar with the way the system works. You might see me in the future here. I hope that you do. Anyone that has any advice, you'll have to talk to me.
You could speak directly into the mic and face us, please.
Anyone that wants to help me out or give me advice, you know, the procedures and policies, how things work, totally open to that. Please do let me know. Down the streets, there's a lot of violence going around, people stealing people's things. I think that anyone, a little nervous, excuse me, anyone that has the motivation to get up and get a job and get themselves out of the situation, I think we should provide some resources so they can do that. You know? The easiest way is the, now look, the homeless population is all the same, but see the ones that got put there by a situation that are working to get out of it, and the ones that are just kind of idling and stealing and, you know, drug use. I know that one issue I had, I lost multiple jobs over this, was a place to put my things when I got up to go to work, where there would be when I got to come back, to have clothing, to have shelter, to have warmth, to have hygiene things. These are things you have to have to succeed. Other than that unique communication, you must have. There's challenges there. Businesses don't want you in their business not spending any money in charge on your phone. You can't even get your phone on. You could have 10 people calling you to give you a job, and you can't get on your phone. But they're people too. Where are they going to charge their phone at? Where are they? You know? It's not a huge deal. You know, one little idea I have is going to run it by you, I'm not very organized. Shoot.
If you could just wrap it up, you say your last sentence, please?
Yeah, the two ideas that basically I have is, one of them is a day storage, where people that are motivated can come to store their things for the day so they can progress and get out of there and not be homeless anymore. The other is an outdoor, low-budget structure where qualified homeless can enter to live. And, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. I appreciate you being here. And if you want to put your name and write down, okay, thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Thanks, Greg, for speaking. And I'm sure you don't need to hear this, but many of the people living on the street were born and raised here or lived here for decades, and it's not actually statistically, according to a point in time survey, magnet for people living on the streets. And whenever I offer a free bus ticket out of here, the response is usually, I was born here. I don't need a free bus ticket home. The thing that I found most interesting in the presentation was the unusual drop in property crimes in 2008. And I think that highlights what our definition of property crimes, because we know that that was the year of the most property crimes. But those property crimes were actually committed by Wells Fargo, Chase, Bank of America, where they stole literally dozens and dozens of people that I personally knows their homes. And so there is a direct correlation between the lack of enforcement against the theft of our community by bankers and outside interests that come here and steal people's property, and the amount of people living on the streets. Because I know a lot of people who had a place to live, but the banks stole their landlord's house, and now they live outside. And you know many of those people too, and you probably are your friends. So I think the definition of crime is one of the issues that we could face as a community. And there's a well-respected professor named Alex Vitale, who is, I just saw, he gave a presentation about his book in Wales about three days ago. a presentation about his book in Wales about three days ago. And his book is called "The End of Policing," and he has done decades of research in changing the policing ideas and how it impacts the community. And I certainly encourage you to invite him to come here and speak. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the final speaker, unless someone else steps up. This is the final speaker, and we'll bring him back to council.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, and Chief Mills. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the ongoing work that you and your department have been doing to meet with a variety of community members and kind of, I see it as sort of coming out of some sort of a shell. So I'm wondering and hoping that this is going to bring a lot of reassurance to the community, that you're accessible, that you're easy to talk to. It felt, in my experience, that maybe the prior police department was meeting with a couple of community groups and not a wide variety of people. So, and something that you said, sort of setting your department up to fail, it sort of resonated with me, is I, I'm wondering if referring to your officers as heroes, and I have love for the Santa Cruz Police Department. My uncle was a police officer 100 years ago, but I think that that could possibly set up the community for disappointment because maybe they're also expecting that. And I personally like to have coffee with a real person. I want to, I want to have a beer with a police officer. I want to really relate to them on a one-on-one level, and I don't want to have you feel like you have to be my rescue or my hero. And I'm just wondering if that's sort of a cultural misunderstanding that could be addressed. I really appreciate your addressing some of the complex issues that feed crime, like the economic disparity that we're experiencing, public health crises, climate weather, freeway interchanges. It's all very complex. It's not as simple as we sometimes like to think. And lifting a variety of people up in the community that aren't in this room would do us all a lot better, and I really appreciate you mentioning that. And just in closing, I'd like to say that your, the website is amazing. There's so much more information for people that can't meet with you or can't come to a meeting. I look forward to seeing stop data. I look forward to seeing more information from the Rangers. I looked forward to seeing that the Rangers are getting some de-escalation training because they're dealing with, you know, a troubled population that needs assistance. And I just want to thank you, and I want to thank all the officers here in this room that I find very accessible and easy to talk to, and let's continue to build relationships in the community and hopefully ease some of the balloon that you feel is sort of...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. This will be the final speaker, unless the person in the back of the room standing wants to speak. This is the final speaker of the evening, before it goes back to council.
Good evening. Damon Bruder, Concerned Citizen. Thank you, Chief Mills, for being here. I have heard through the grapevine, you know, the rumblings underground, that your officers are upsetting people because your officers are starting to do their job. These are law-abiding people, or generally law-abiding people that have gotten tickets for various things. Yay, I'm glad. If I deserve a ticket, write one to me. If anybody deserves a ticket, write one. Catch and release, I know that's the situation right now. Your hands are tied. Please keep catching. As far as the release part, well, that's up to the laws that govern the judges. There is an initiative going around right now, the Keep California Safe Initiative. It closes loopholes in Prop 47 and 57 to help you do your job. If you want to sign that petition or hear about it, see my wife after the meeting. And I do want to applaud the Rangers and the SCPD for the way that they handle situations that could quickly escalate. I saw a situation on Pacific Avenue last week where a Ranger talked to a gentleman and actually ended up getting him, at that moment, a bus ticket home to San Francisco to get out of here because that's what he wanted, even though the person was fun to deal with. The Rangers, they handled it very professionally and very patiently. And, you know, that's what I see when I see the Rangers and I see the SCPD, when they deal with people like that. They deal with them compassionately, professionally, and patiently, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay. I'll bring it back to council. I know there was someone who mentioned the issue of the charging and storage, and he's left. And so those of you, either Cynthia or Rochelle, who are on the public, or the homeless coordinating committee, can email him and talk about what that work's done. I'd appreciate it. And I think, I'd just like to say, you know, this is an opportunity for comments, but also questions, if there are still that come after the public speakers. I want to say that this is the first time we've ever had a comprehensive report since I've been on council that went into the staffing and organizational issues that, you know, that I feel are just essential to say how we can move forward. I mean, we have what I feel is a public safety kind of crisis when you look at the statistics that we've seen over the past 10 years. The report that you showed us goes up through 2015, but it looks like we've had just a consistently high level of crime that's existed in this town, and we cannot just continue to tolerate the way things have been. It's got to change. And so by having a restructured department that looks at how we manage those, I think is essential for our city's future. One of the things that I really want to speak to is the fact that how we're measuring what constitutes safety in this town also has to change. If we're taking information that comes through where we're treating all crimes the same way, you know, everything becomes, you know, an urgency. And I know you're speaking to that in your, in your comments, but when this consolidation of all the 911, non-emergency and emergency calls took place, it was about 2007, and it was a means to track that. The number you shared is the one that's kind of more of the emergency level, is kind of consistent what it was at the time that they merged them then. And so when we look at whether or not officers are responding at this time, it seems as though we're kind of at that same place, and there's been kind of a static. So I want to just make sure that, one, when we look forward, that we're measuring how we are going to be making improvements. If it's by neighborhood, then I think we should be looking at the types of reporting that comes back to us, not the reports that we've seen recently, but what are the types of crimes that are taking place in the Beach Flats area or the downtown, or in the Upper West Side or East Side, so that we're seeing where we can go from there. Because they're not, right now, there, I don't know how we as a city can say to invest more, will we get that result? If it's not a monetary thing, in my mind, I think there's some other policy issues at play that we need to really focus on. And I read the report thoroughly, and I thought that their comments that they had about having the police department advocate with the electeds on where those are was, for me, like a critical thing. And I don't think we hear enough as far as, well, what are those barriers that we, that we have that go beyond our staffing levels that we need to focus on as a city? Those are just some initial comments, but I'd love to hear from the council as far as, you know, how we can better prioritize these safety issues that, you know, that are outlined in the report, as well as kind of the ultimate staffing recommendations that are included. Councilmember Crone.
Yeah, I'd like to first run through really quickly, and I know you're a big guy because we've talked about these questions. I noticed five questions came up from the public. Police on bikes?
We have them. And in fact, Brandon Lima, you still here? How many miles you put it in a week?
Not really.
Ah, come on, no. Reaching out to Beach Flats residents, there was no forum, I know. One of them, I guess, was included in the, was it Bayview? No, it was Galt School, both of them. But how do we reach out to Beach Flats residents?
Well, we frequently are down there on foot, talking with residents. Leo, we have several Spanish speakers who go door-to-door down there on a regular basis and work with people. We did not break it down to every single small neighborhood in the city. There had just been way too many meetings. It was a push as it was. So they were included in several of those meeting areas.
Seven uniformed officers here tonight? Are they all on duty?
Most of them are, because I've asked my deputy chiefs and my lieutenants to be here as managers who are representing their service areas in case you had questions for them. So yeah, they're, most of them are on duty.
And just to respond to the heroes comment?
They are heroes.
Okay, we'll leave it at that, and...
And, but they can't drink beer on duty.
And maybe this, I know that the city manager and I talked about this, two questions came up, a non-emergency number and the bus ticket home, and how do we get people home?
With respect to the non-emergency number, there is, there is one that the NetComm has in place, and I think part of the change might be to, I think before the rationale was it goes to the same place. But however, the distinction here, though, is the response needs to be different, so it does matter. So I think we'll start work with NetComm to make that change. The other thing that I've mentioned to you, too, that we're working on is we are looking at implementing a 311 system, an app where people can, with their phones, you know, submit complaints. And so that's gearing up here to get going pretty soon. So hopefully by the fall, we should have that up and running to make it easier for people to report crimes. And related to that, too, is that as we look at this data and we look at alternatives to responding to calls, I think working with all the other city staff, we can, for example, there are areas where it makes more sense to have, you know, Public Works, for example, respond to certain calls of a certain variety, we'll make that change as appropriate. So we'll be looking at all of that.
And the bus ticket home?
Oh, we do have a home or bound program that an individual alluded to, that is offered to individuals. And actually, we do make quite a use of that. We actually expanded the budget for that. So people do regularly choose to go home through that program.
And the last question for Chief is the ticketing of homeless campers? Is that continuing? Is it, is it any different than before bench lands took place?
No, my policy still stands. I mean, night at night to six in the morning. If people are sleeping, we don't issue them a ticket when there's not a complaint. And if there is a complaint, then we take care of business. But during the daytime, it's still legal to camp.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Chase.
Yeah, I just really appreciated the approach that the report took, basically talking about realigning resources. And I think that's really smart, looking at what we have and utilizing it better. The way I describe it to people often is putting the right response to the right situation at the right time. And I think referencing, actually, the conversation with Chief Frally is really important, too, is how much time officers are going out to respond to public health issues when it's really a public health response that's needed. And I think that's a huge part of what we see in this community, and was referenced many times tonight, whether it be relating to homelessness or substance abuse or behavioral health. Those are really public health issues. And so I just appreciate the approach you're taking, and I'm looking forward to see what it does to realign the resources that you have now and, and continue to encourage every possible creative way to get more staff. And know that, I think council has consistently been behind that, doing whatever we can to support that.
Absolutely, you have been.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Watkins.
Thank you for your presentation tonight and for all the folks that are here in the audience. I just want to say how much respect I have for the work that you do in our community. And having worked alongside a number of the officers in my other capacity in education, I know how dedicated you are to our community, and we feel that and we know it. I really want to say how much I appreciate that this report is data-driven and is looking at how our systems are functioning and how they can improve. And I think systems change is challenging and it takes time, and I, but I believe it's necessary. And I think, you know, law enforcement and criminalization and there's a place for that, and also a bigger sort of picture of the health and well-being of our community and the health and well-being of your officers are tied to that. I think, bless you. One of the components that I just really appreciate you bringing up and what I feel really passionate about is prevention. I think we foster what we feed, and if we feed more preventative activities and preventative strategies, then we will see results. And so I'm really all for that and supportive of that. I believe that this is a bigger community conversation, and I really look forward to more partnerships and collaborations, community strategies, diversions, neighborhood accountability boards, whatever it may be, to start saying, how is we, how can we as a community rise up to be supportive of the health and well-being of all of our community? And that, and then results in less criminal activity often. I am, I'm interested in workforce development, and I know I've mentioned that, too, also. I think we can build our own, and I think there's a lot of beauty in that and the connections and ties to the local community, and then also just the sort of logistics of how expensive it is to live in this community. And so if we can work on workforce development and trying to recruit and engage and create that pipeline, that would be fantastic in a consideration for succession planning. And then just, you know, just really the alignment of resources, I think, is a really incredible takeaway. I think when we know information, we have to do something about that. And what the takeaway in terms of how to more proactively look at what we have and how to best utilize that is incredibly important. So I have, you know, a number of observations as somebody who really appreciates criminal justice and public safety and health and well-being of our community. But I'll leave it at that, and just really thank you for the work, and I look forward to periodically hearing updates on where we are so we can measure our success and, and sort of check in and see where we can go in the right direction from there.
Councilmember Royan.
I know in your goal of getting more officers out on patrol, that you're looking at some changes, and when Vice Mayor Watkins mentioned the prevention side of things, which I believe we're all very passionate about, I know that you do, you know, we have the Citizens Police Academy, which is an education component of the community, and something I went through several years ago, and I just find invaluable in terms of bringing that here as a council member. And also the Pride Program, which gets involved with at-risk youth that are at the mission or junior high, oh, junior high, I just dated myself, middle school age level. So I'm wondering, will those programs still exist? And if so, how, if most of the officers are going to be out in the field?
Well, the person running those programs was Leo Gomez, who everybody just, you know, raves about, and I rave about him as well. I've redeployed him to the field. However, today I met with a group of volunteers and to try to transfer much of the responsibility to a cadre of volunteers who can run these same programs with the help and the assistance of sworn personnel. Now, that's a huge lift to ask of volunteers. This is a very robust program, a lot of time commitment. So what we're probably going to do is continue these programs as much as we can, tailoring them back just a little bit so that we can continue with the programs, however, move it forward. Council, Vice Mayor Watkins gave me a grant the other day to deal with tobacco. And so we see this as a way to work with the Pride Program, and so I've got a person writing that grant. It's due, I think, at the end of this week, so we're pushing a deadline. And we think we might be able to bring that person on, should we be successful in that grant application, to run the program completely. So we're trying to find ways to push forward, continue these programs. We see them as hugely beneficial to the department, to the city. I'm not interested in backing away from those. We just, we're just going to have to figure out what's a reasonable balance, because I need every boot on the ground right now to deal with the crime issues.
All right. And I know what's great, and I know with the Pride Program, because I'm involved with my other hat on.
Right.
Our interns want to continue, our UC Santa Cruz interns who work with Pride definitely want to continue helping, so look to that as a resource as well, and maybe there's an opportunity to step it up from that end as well.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
I would just echo the comments from my colleagues about the tremendous respect that I also have for the work that you all do, understanding it's very difficult. I mean, I guess I would just highlight my appreciation for a couple of the ways that you've talked this evening and have been engaging with the public around this question of, one, police officers being kind of tasked with the job of social services within our city, and the challenges and the frustrations that I imagine officers face. I mean, we, I really appreciate the data-driven, you know, the report, but it doesn't necessarily give you the picture of what people experience on the ground. And so I think it's really important for all of us to stay in touch with that, and I'll be talking with you about ride-alongs in the very near future. I haven't done one in quite a while. But, you know, I think that, so I think just, you know, really being mindful of that, and I appreciate that you are and that you really are supporting a team of officers and personnel who have the best interests of our city at heart, and also your position on enforcement of the camp, our camping ordinance, our sleeping ban. And I hope that that has taken some of the pressure off of officers, but I'm not, you know, I don't really know. So if you want to say anything about that now, that would be great, but otherwise, we can talk about that in the future. So thank you for everything you're doing, and I'm really excited. I think a lot of people in the community are excited. I know at my neighborhood meeting at Galt School, you know, I saw people who live on my street who are, you know, were really inspired and want to get involved in community policing in a way, and feel really, they feel that the police department is becoming more accessible. And so I just appreciate that, and thank you to our deputy chiefs who are here as well. I know you're committed to that, too. Thanks.
You know, I just would follow up on something that was included in the report. There was a recommendation that the consultants made about considering the establishment of a dedicated team that dealt with the social services issues that are really being handled by the police department. I know we've seen in the city of San Jose where they have groups that are assembled to deal with some of the issues that come up, so that are signed directly and they're budgeted. We, as part of our work plan, have set up a group that's, you know, one tasked with issues of homelessness and others. Have you thought about why that wasn't in the recommendation, the final recommendation, Have you thought about why that wasn't in their recommendation, the final recommendation, to have that type of group assigned to deal this, so that we are kind of furthering that realignment, to, you know, have maybe non-officers handle those types of tasks?
Well, I think that is an important issue to look at. And one of the things I'm, I think I'm really proud of the city, is that our neighborhood services team and the entire city is kind of unified in dealing with these problems together. And I, it's one group of people all pushed in the same direction, and that's so important for us to be successful that way. I, you know, we have, as you know, mental health liaisons who ride with our officers in the cars, and from the county, and they do a great job dealing with some of these bigger mental health issues. But I would be very in favor of a team that is a county-wide team to, that assesses this, that works with city employees as well as county employees, mostly county employees. This is their responsibility. I just don't think that should be a police responsibility. We have to dig ourselves out of this problem, rather than get further entrenched. And now, having said that, we're the only game in town right now, and that's, that becomes kind of tough, until, I would say we, the city, is the only game in town.
Well, I mean, I'll just say, we have funded programs to kind of address that in a comprehensive way, and we do have some council members on various committees that kind of are looking at those. I would like maybe our Public Safety Committee to look at that very issue, about how we can kind of continue to shift some of those responsibilities to non, you know, PD assignments, so that they can be freed up even further.
Sure.
We did that earlier in the year with some of the Public Works into in traffic enforcement. I don't know if that's still continuing, like in terms of the parking in different parts of the city. And I think there's opportunities for other areas to deal with that, and other kind of programs that maybe could be peeled off to further free up officers. And I'd like to hear from, you know, the PD and city manager's office on where those might, you know, be. The other thing is, I feel like there should be, you know, realignment with results, that's important, that we say that, you know, hey, we are doing this, and there's a reason why we're moving forward, is to see a positive change. And you outlined a five-year kind of period of time that you see these results taking place. I think it would be good to at least indicate what kind of expectations the community would be seeing in each of those periods over time, so we know exactly, you know, the direction we're going, and we can have the opportunity to comment on it. But, you know, the realignments with results, I think is a strategy to make our community safer. And I like the idea of making sure that we're identifying where in our neighborhoods we're able to prioritize to make our city safer.
Agreed. You know, one of the things that I'm having my lieutenants do is meet with the deputy chiefs and myself monthly, to give us an update on what they're doing, what their priorities are in their, in their neighborhood policing areas, and how we're doing in terms of the data associated with that. Now, creating that data at this point is a little bit rough, I have to be honest, because of the RMS system. However, we're going to do the best we can and move forward. I would hope that community members would start to see relief. And it shouldn't take, you know, five years to see that kind of relief. We need, we need to, you know, as I said before, listening's time is over, now it's time to get at it, and we're getting at it.
And just one final comment, and that is, I know Carol Scourge from Parks and Recs is here. We, it would be good if the Parks and Rec Commission were able to hear the recommendations on the Ranger issues that came up. We got an email on that, and I'd like to make sure that's rolled out. I haven't heard any feedback from the parks, but I mean, I think the program's been very successful in terms of prioritizing some of the park safety issues, and keeping them well-maintained in parts of the city. And I think having something that's reorganized might even kind of expand it to new parks and other areas. So it'd be good to get their feedback on what this proposal means to the Parks Department from one of our subcommittees as well. So I hope you'll plan to do that.
Sure.
Councilmember Crone.
Three quick issues that are kind of leftovers, that have been part of our community discussions, and then a couple of comments. But HSI are, they have a desk no longer at the police department, and what's our relationship there? Homeland Security Investigations?
Yeah, no, I know. Okay, for the, for the public. They do not have a desk in the police department. They are completing a, that large case, where you would, hopefully will see indictments in the near future. But there's no activity in terms of immigration enforcement, period.
Okay.
End of the point, from the Santa Cruz Police Department.
Thank you. And ICE, what's our relationship right now with them?
Well, it's kind of, ICE is a division of HSI. And there's, the relationship is, if you have information that we need, intelligence on terrorism or something, we'll take it, but we're not working with them.
And crisis intervention training, there was a goal to get all the officers trained, has that been realized?
It has. We gave a de-escalation training to our entire department, had members of the community come and watch it, to make sure that it was something that was in line with what their thinking was, and it was successful. And I think we can chalk up a save from the other day, just with that.
Okay, I just want to say that I really appreciate all of your efforts, that what you've been doing, reaching out. The first day when I met you, going to Cafe Purgalacy for a coffee, you know, and just you're jumping in my leaf and taking a tour of places around Santa Cruz. I want to say thank you to the deputy chiefs, too. I saw those, I was at three of those meetings recently. I thought you, Lieutenant Garcia as well, I thought you guys did a stellar job, reaching out to people. And I think that's what it really is about, it's that contact, people want a voice. We don't have all the answers, and we're looking to the public for some answers. But I really thought you, you all did a, just a bang-up job at those meetings, you stayed for a while after every, for every question to be answered, as people left and stuff. This report, I'm, I read a lot of reports, and this is a better report, and it's much more professional, but it's also sort of in your face. It's pointing out the warts, as well as what you do well. So, you know, a lot of reports are written for people who pay for the report to be written, and there's a little bit of that in here, but there's also some criticism, and some like, hey, you know, this is how to do better. And I really appreciate seeing that in print as well. Lastly, just to underline what Councilmember Watkins said about public health issues, really important that, you know, we pursue that line of, you know, with the public, and not, everything's not a police intervention, it's, there's a lot of public health interventions going on, and we need to, like, you know, make that happen. And I really appreciate teaming up with Chief Frawley, and anybody at the county, too, who wants to be part of that, to address those issues. So thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Okay, do you have any comments? No. Okay, there's action that's on the floor that we need, so can I get a motion?
I'll move that we accept the recommendation as written in the report.
Second.
Vice Mayor.
Want to take a chase?
Vice Mayor Watkins, I'll do the chair of the Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Noroyan. So that's a motion and a second. And also, I hope that we have a referral kind of to the Public Safety Committee to go into more detail in terms of some of the discussion points that we had today. And also, kind of continue to follow up on this. I appreciate the, not only the format of the presentation, but the reporting, as Councilmember Crone mentioned, that was provided. And I could see how this would be beneficial in other parts of the city, to see stuff like this, to know, hey, how we can move the, move the needle on our public safety needs in the city. So thank you. Okay, there's a motion, a second on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. Have a good evening. The meeting is adjourned.